See, Tule, we national. Can we all stand up? Thank you. We are the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure from the National Assembly. Greetings again to the traditional leadership. The mayor of Elundini Local Municipality. And all the councillors here. The leaders of political parties. The leaders of organised labour. The leaders of civic organisation. And all those who have come in this meeting through this weather that is so cold outside. My name is Nolita Njobongwana, the chaplain of the Portfolio Committee, deployed by ANC in Parliament from this province of the legend, the Eastern Cape, in Oar Tambo, Kukumbu. And then I will ask the honourable members who are part of this Portfolio Committee to introduce themselves.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Samantha Graham-Morrery, and I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance. I am also a member of the Portfolio on Public Works and Infrastructure, and I'm from the Eastern Cape. I live in a town called Ikhafu, Chafrenet, and I'd like to thank all of you for coming out today in this very cold weather to come and share your inputs with us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Madeleine Hicklin. I am also a member of the Democratic Alliance. I hail from Madrand in Gauteng, and I feel privileged to be here with you in the Eastern Cape, and I too thank you for coming out in this incredibly cold weather.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sharon van Skalgveik, a member of the African National Congress, deployed to the National Assembly and being part of this Portfolio Committee, and I'm originally from Uppington in the Northern Cape, and I'm glad to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, honourable members, who have been joined by one of our colleagues from the National Assembly, Honorable Bakoli Lenodada, who is deployed by the DA in the National Assembly. Honorable Lenodada. Thank you. We have the first citizen of this local municipality. Her worship, the mayor of Elundini Local Municipality, councillor Lanks, deployed by the ANC. Thank you, Sotelopu. We have these councillors that are DA councillors. Some are in the district and some are around this area. We have councillor Michael Lottering from the DA. Councillor Mathi Nell. We have councillor Magda Botha. We have councillor Lulama Odlulama Pili. They are all from the DA. We have ANC councillors that are also here with us from the Elundini Local Municipality. Councillor Pikinini. Thank you. Councillor Mampinja. Councillor Soto. Thank you, councillors. And then we have the traditional leaders, Bandanabe Gazi, that have joined us today, and they've braved this weather to be here today to express their views on this issue that we are bringing here. Bandanabe Gazi, you won't stand up. You will just raise your hands where you are. We have Chief Zwelothando Mabandla. Chief Londile. Chief Kwebi Kwebinjala Mabandla. We always recognise leaders because from all where we're coming from, we are led. The traditional leaders, especially us that are coming from rural areas, will respect our chiefs, and our councillors that are leading us. We are not leaving on the space. And we are here as the Portfolio Committee bringing to you the draft bill number 23 of 2020. The expropriation bill. This bill seeks to repeal Act Number 63 of 1975. As you can hear from the year, this act was adopted by the previous government, the apartheid government. And we all know that the previous government's laws were protecting certain minority within the country. And this bill that we're bringing to you also seeks to have uniform standards of expropriating property for public purpose and public interest for all the expropriating authorities. And where it is necessary, nil compensation may be effected by the expropriating authority. We are here to seek your views on this draft bill. Where you feel that a certain clause in the bill is not necessary or may be enhanced, you can raise that in this meeting. We expect you to express your political views if you're coming from political parties. As a society, if you are coming from a certain society. As traditional authorities. As organised labour. And also as individuals. This bill was published on the 10th of December 2020. We expecting you to express your views without fear or favour. We will give you only three minutes to express your views. And when you exceed those three minutes, we will indicate and stop you. We will give traditional leaders five minutes. We expect everyone in the hall to respect the speaker who will be on the floor. Whether you agree or you do not agree with what he or she is presenting. And lastly, we will just take notes on what you are presenting to us. And we will not discuss what you are presenting to us. We are through with all the provinces that we're still going to visit. As the Portfolio Committee. You are free to express your view in any of the 11 official languages. All your views will be recorded. We will also be taking some notes. You are all welcome in this meeting. The mayor has indicated that as they are still dealing with budgetary processes in the municipality, she will leave the meeting quietly when we are continuing. Councillor Lanks, siya bulela uka ba uka na. Kasakala imitingi wazo sifulela iolo. Kumaspalati wako. Siya bulela kakulmbogot. We are now starting. The first round, we won't take the chiefs on the first round. We will take them in the second round. Can we then get hands? Can we please raise hands? Number one, number two, number three. When I've pointed to you, please join the seats. Number four, yes. Number five, number six, number seven. If at any point I may not knowingly point to a chief, ndite ndipagamise, please nindignatise. Yeah, any other hand? This hand, yeah, and that hand. And I think Sotelopu Masugne, uka, uka, you'll be the last one in this row. Okay. You may just come to the mic. No, Sotelopu first.
We start with the mayor.
Mayor Lanks, because she's going to leave us. And then our second round, then we will give the traditional leaders their time. Okay, any other hand? Yeah. Eh, no, no, bawa, lo. Can you add another chair? Yes. Over to you, Sotelopu.
Political parties as koyo apa. Community members as koyo apa. The officials as koyo. Dipagama apa ewendu Sotelopu waloma spala wase Elundini. Di zoku magule ndau. Di zoku teta ngale biil iziswe apa kuti. Di teta ndenge lungu le African National Congress. Eliwi skyema serichin yalapa ejo kapi iartiti. Si zoku uti kade sili ndilele mini injenga li. Kade siku mwane la oku sasi ngasange sibe sukutamli li. Kaku fiki mina injenga li na namplange sititina. Le ipil ibe we apa. Si bona ine ngulu leko le sasi ke si ayfuna yo kukuleka kweju. Koba uba uthe tango mshaba. Uthe tango butyebi no gunwa nebe liliso. Le ingukuyenzi wayo kulumkakosiseko. Siyambi sana na yotina hundred percent. Oko kuba makuandwe ngolu stobo konukuze. Abo baba ngasange bakwazu, baba be bakamle. Bakwazu ukukamla. Kanga ngo koba nakokumtimpu omshaba. Ngoba omshaba bubo mukuti ukpila kuti.
Thank you, chaplain. And greetings to the Portfolio Committee from the National Assembly. Our traditional leaders, I greet them. We as women, we don't salute the traditional leaders, we greet them. And greetings to the councillors, the officials, the committee members, and everybody present here. I'm standing here as the mayor of this municipality as well as a member of the ANC. The input that I'm going to make, I'm making it under those caps. And I've checked the bill that has been presented to us here. I looked at it and I've noticed that the bill itself contains exactly what we need as the previously disadvantaged members of the community. Because it is clear that the bill is going to bring us wealth and minerals and all kinds of enrichments that individuals need. This bill is going to bring change to the previously disadvantaged people. Because to possess land means wealth and it also boosts the economy. So by bringing this bill to us, this bill just indicates that we are in the right direction that is going to benefit each and every one of us, especially the previously disadvantaged. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable chair, and welcome to our Standing Committee to the Eastern Cape. I'm speaking on behalf of the DA today. We want to make it clear that the DA is committed and we support land reform and restitution. But we do not believe that this bill is the answer to the current crisis on land reform. We support the need for a new expropriation act to replace the existing one. But we have a number of issues with the bill in its current form. I'll start with Section 12, subsection 3c of the expropriation bill, which allows for the payment of nil compensation where land, despite belonging to someone, has been abandoned because the owner has lost control of the land. We believe that this clause is open to land invaders who seeks to force governments' hand to provide land for housing opportunities. Because as soon as a person invades the ground, it could be determined that the owner has lost control of the land. Throughout the country, land invasions have become prevalent. This clause basically incentivises because the final result would be expropriation without compensation. While we fully appreciate the land question has become a crisis in this country, we believe that land reform remains possible if done properly, fairly, and without corruption. We further believe that we should be encouraging private land ownership with title deeds, proper process than consigning our people to live in shacks in informal settlements. By preventing land grabs, government can use properties for their intended purposes and ensure that more formal human settlements are established so that people can become property owners and create generational wealth. Section 12, subsection 3c of this bill will achieve the exact opposite, and we cannot support the expropriation bill while this remains an option. Section 12, subsection 3 of the expropriation bill also allows for expropriation of land without compensation under certain circumstances. Although this is not a limited list, the section does however address the question of mortgages that might exist on the properties in question. Banks in South Africa are exposed to the tune of around 1.6 trillion in mortgages. The threat of expropriation without compensation could create a banking crisis which could collapse our economy. If expropriation without compensation occurs on a property which has a mortgage, the owner of the property remains liable for that mortgage. However, without the property to act as the surety for that mortgage, there's little to no hope that the bank is going to get its money. Also, where the threat of expropriation without compensation exists, there will be fewer people to invest in property, so there will be fewer mortgages. People will also be loath to borrow money for the development of their properties if there's a threat of expropriation without compensation. All of this will have a negative effect on our banking sector. Until the expropriation bill is properly addressed to the issues around what we are raising, we cannot support the bill in this current form and format. I thank you.
Just before you speak, can we please encourage that? In fact, before, just introduce yourself to us as we are writing down. The last speaker was councillor Mathi Nell.
It's me. I'm councillor Mathi Nell. It was councillor Magda Botha.
Oh, Magda Botha.
Magda Botha.
Oh, okay.
And I'm councillor Mathi Nell. Good morning, honourable chair and committee. Welcome here to the cold Eastern Cape. Also protocol observed. Welcome to everybody, all councillors here. The DA fully supports land reform and restitution. The DA also believes that our existing land reform policies are not a problem. The reason why land reform has failed so spectacularly in this country is because of corruption and male administration. The expropriation bill is not the answer to land reform. The expropriation bill has been drafted to give the government the power to expropriate property for its own use. The bill does not address what will happen to the land once it has been expropriated. And in the main, the property that is expropriated will be used by the state to fulfil its own development aims, such as building of roads, schools, hospitals, and the like. Land expropriation, land reform, purpose is only one small part of this bill. The issue with the expropriation bill in its current form is it does not properly define property except to say that it is in line with the definition in section 25 of the constitution. This creates a problem where anything other than land is going to be expropriated because in terms of this bill, there are no clear guidelines for the expropriation of property other than land. Under what circumstances may property other than land be expropriated? Who will determine just an equitable compensation? And what access does the property owner have to courts in the event of a dispute? Until there is absolute clarity on what property can be expropriated and how, this bill cannot be supported. I thank you.
Good morning everyone, I'm councillor Michael Otrong representing the DA. Section 25 of the constitution allows for the payment of null compensation. In that states that just an equitable compensation may be paid. In certain circumstances, this couldn't be null. The expropriation bill however is more explicit and in section 12.3 provides five circumstances under which null compensation can be paid. It does not however limit the circumstances to just those five. The bill states that it is not limited to those five. This creates an opening for the state to find any circumstances that meet public interest or public purpose, criteria for the null compensation to be paid for land that is being expropriated. While the section lists the five circumstances, it provides absolutely no clarity on who will determine if the property in question meets the criteria nor does it provide details as to what the measurement would be for something like loss of control over the property or abandoned land. Where there is a chance that land will be taken for null compensation, the guidelines for determination of such needs to be absolutely clear and equivocal. Unless this is rectified and proper procedures and guidelines are inserted, we must certainly, certainly not or cannot support the adoption of this bill. I thank you.
For a change, let me speak Sisoto, if you allow me. Sisoto. Can I speak Sisoto? Haki lewehebatsa dibaka. Kilewa jina horerifmani mnyela usha naluna. Rela batu baba tu. Bau ibana kwete li leresa fmani. Nahaya ru ne ka sile ifilizi. Yenwa yavua mona. Ki Mahavani Mahavani. Ya emising communal farmers. Katla asa Ullkowas Association. Baswari bak. Nahahaisa alisia ru na na kwete li. Hoi ban mona meresibilizanting ru na. Re bona repetens iliyahu. Hoo e ban ufmana dipofolo zarun. Disha kawanga damaria vitu lauslo kaluku. Se bile ringua rela batu e ban harisibi kotamaisa dipofo. Onaguale hau tamia rene we di farms. Oda ukua utuana rezadiesa uka ba ekone komanaja dipofolo zarun. Yena yona ibonse hanke ore na hayaru ne kududu ru ne baita pili baru. Ilinlu na baru emising hukuru men. Isika ntena ikapeta hala horu bo lki rekonu ufmana se u, se ban sinenzusu fumana kiva tuwa ban pili. Ka huli kana. Baswari baru. Kanedi nanthuri sapota humina hani. Katla tavela hulu kanidi ka sese pili. Aska yafela mona feela. Haki lewege ho.
I would like to thank the opportunity that I'm being given and then first and foremost like to greet all people that are up there, the Chairperson and your people. And my name is Mahavani Mahavani. I am from communal farmers that is under the Rural Cores Association. I would really, we are really very happy that today, after a very long time of black people being... Thank you for the opportunity for the black people now to be given an opportunity to give their views after for a very long time of their suffering. Our place is very grumpy where we have our animals and the animals die a lot in winter because we don't have the place to graze them and that make us look like we can't manage our animals. That we are happy today to see that our government is on our side at the end. This is what we call freedom that we've been waiting for for a long time. So we support this bill and we are very happy for this bill to be passed. We will be very happy if this does not end here with us but continue to the whole country. Thank you.
Ikamalam du glulama opili ilungu le Democratic Alliance apa elundi ni local municipality. Private property rights are the cornerstone of any democracy. And constitutional democracy exists where the rights of individual of greater value than the rights of the states. The expropriation bill creates a situation where the rights of the states carry more weight than the individuals under section 2 subsection 2. The rights of private property owners are further undermined by the fact that the expropriation bill may take place prior to the finalization of compensation. Until the rights of individual and property are protected from the abuse of the state, we cannot support the bill. I thank you.
Man dibulise ku mshabunga pambila. Nakuiya wongu mdokoyo ngai tlaeshi. Di nguzantisile mambinja. Oh, ngu councilway African National Congress apa elundi. Okokaala mandicho indoketi le bill siyamke la ngazantla zombie. Isiza disokba itesiyamke la ngazantla zombie. Le bill kuya bonakala indokba. Isao tetan ngakasane even to the downtrodden. Ekbonakala indoba i democracy. Kuyo aikakati? Because kasi tetan i democracy palele sa utetan indoba omslaba ma ukwazi indoba ufigelele ebantwi iba. Wakwazi wonke umdu sebenza irrespective indoba unemia loganya enge namali. Because indetetindueti aucho nga papa milukala. Lendo ibikade isenza eka. Ye willing buyer, ne willing seller, kangi isenza lendo. And ibite tu kuti kelondo. Inaba bandubani ziba lapi mzanz Afrika. Banga kangi kwazi even kwa kikla selle kretileu. Upartisan wye ekonomi elilisu. Omslaba gezezinyezezindo ez kela indoba abandwa ukwazi upartisan wye ekonomi elilisu. And eh yonando kune kasi chonge le bill. Le bill le ifenge yonantlela. Because kaluku bino uamba itilendo. Ma ge sijonge lomslaba kwaba bandubu ebuse zantinzabo. Indoba i benefit aba ifumenaye ngalo omslaba itini. So that is kwa zutetan indoitii. Kuteni na yona inga funu, ingaize ichongwe indoba ikwazi indoba ishero even na kwakwaba ndubekati benantse omslaba unge kosantinzabo. So yonlendo nditilo lenatzige le bill. Ye ifenge yonantlela. Ya kela ke inantseketetaka ngakasane ez inkluziyene zabantu kundue i democracy, enguz.
I am councillor Zalisile Mambinja here at Lundi. Greetings to the Chairperson and the entire Portfolio Committee. I want to state it here that we support the bill. The reason why we support the bill, we see that the bill addresses even the people from grassroots level. The people from grassroots level don't have access on land. But this bill gives such people an opportunity. And because our people never had access to land, as a result, they are behind when it comes to finances. And this bill gives everybody an opportunity to access to land. Being poor, being rich, everybody is given chance to have access to land through this bill. And furthermore, we should also note that there is a certain kind of a population in our country who had access to land. And this bill furthermore, we should note that it is very fair. The reason I say that is that if you can check those who have access to land, their financial status or economical status is very different to those who don't have access. If you can maybe ask them, what can they share with those who don't have access? Because their status is not the same. We support this bill because it's going to open opportunities to everybody, being rich, being poor, for us to have access to the economy. Thank you.
Just before you speak, councillor Kamelo, the name came a bit late. Apologies for not introducing you properly.
No, ndi, nambe ndisugela njewo kulusa. Bamba ndulusa nduunkie, yabonakala. Indenzeka yonami pililindi ya ibona kteka ktuwa kteka benka yas, benka kuwa awe kuti kunayo imitting today. Di iba mbanja apa indelele ni komma nisugera nsofika. And then me sekuleteka. I bill le right, but ke funeka kautatwa omslaba. Kuchoongwe omslaba oproductive kwaba ndebewusse benzes. Ukuze kwele nu nga beteki in community. Kautatwa omslaba umtu ebene production ebeta. And sinaproblem di na be yuki. Na sema kliya. I council yata de resolution ya tekeso omslaba. Ingakange consultant ya utenselu PJ Bryson. And abanwalabe Lundi ni, ba endaba besavarisha for omslaba. And une question mark indelu utenselu ngayala omslaba kapidipaisi. Because abandu banastokwa. Abanda bamnyama keta abandu bamnyama akulispiliva akulupila. Genfoyo no gleam. And most ya abanda basala kwezdo gishbasuwe ma farmer abana eyindoba yasu except gleam. So kuya funeka bapidipaisi, imitlabanga isebenzisio. Akwazba aiwo isele kapandla kwen tlalo. Kubandu kuweb community aselundi ni etatwele omslaba ebifama ya usebenzis. Yes, uba kwa naga pidipaisi benka lelo. Sekonisbeznisasenzelezo nesintla. Badumslaba lo na wa benkela le enge korait. Siyatala ke imitlabama itatwa kwa da kuchoongwe kala bangawa. Aguzu be tega na ekonomi South Africa, enguz.
Greetings to the Chairperson and the Committee. I'm Mlamle Arun Kamelo, the councillor local here. I've perused this bill and I've checked the bill. The bill is, looks good, is in good shape. But I just want to warn that when expropriating land, we should also take note that there should be no repercussion or negative repercussions to the people who are owning land, those who are coming from the disadvantaged community when their land that they are owning is producing for them. If the land is productive, those people, at least they should be spared from expropriating their land. That is, those who are coming from the disadvantaged community. Something happened here in the past that the council, the municipal council took a resolution of selling land or a piece of land to PJ Bryson without consulting or consultation to the community. And we should also bear in mind that the community around here, people are coming from farms. The only thing they know to making a living is their livestock and agriculture. So they do need land to, for their livestock to graze and also to do their agricultural activities. And furthermore, this PJ Bryson, yes, we do benefit from him. He assists us as the community members. But we want him to be given a chance that he give us access to the piece of land that he is not using so that the community can put that piece of, the piece of land that is not using into great use. And it should give that land to the community members without expecting compensation. Thank you.
Kwa felo ndogoso. Kwa felo mandela baki. Kwa felo land camp include RTP house. Bengeti swanga basali ba lapi lukshmi. De pume ma plasi. Di tetan i forum committee. Epagula ngenkosi manflecha elundi. And imele indose tibenele indose mi taba. Kulete. Tibe kwezinkuzi. Satinda umela ez induesukumina kuti. Nani ndi ayfela lendo. Isile yonamplanje isokwazu skulu lakulama kama ndiala besukubu. Inkomo zo butibetu zo tatabetu zo mamameitu zigwelele mi taba. Okuesbi nindiso kwele. Omaspala na jengbasasi timandi le mi taba apa ngapagati lokha. Upinde white tengi sa, e tengi seller. Ez nyé. Abanyé abandu imitaba without utibana abandu basi yuki. Stesi afumanas afumanis mi taba kutwa imitabi pelile. Imitaba sa afumana kwefomas. Sa utenge lo akona. Uchumaspala. Enditibananabo. Disa utingapelele yonanjengu mdukwe forum. Shefela lendo namdi blangi engusi. Augusto kanga le mi taba. Intelelendo nisena yu shebu le, enguz.
I am Bennett Jonas and I'm born and bred in New Yuki. I want to say I'm happy with this bill because our land was taken away and the first person who took our land and sold it was Mont Forest.
and the first person who took our land and sold it was Mont Forest. Mont Forest took our land without consultation and many people were left landless, homeless. And they came to us and they told us that they discovered that all their wives deserted them, those who are working in farms and staying there. And we invited them to come and join us in the townships and stay with us in the townships. And we promised that we were going to assist them when they want to claim back their land. And as a result, many people who came here who did not have homes, we assisted them to fight for their land, to get the land. As a result, we had new townships here like Mandela Park, Ntokoza and others. That is the result of us claiming land for the people, for communal purposes. And furthermore, I'm in a forum committee deployed by the Tragicial leaders where I'm standing for land claims. I'm representing the Tragicial leaders there in land claims. And furthermore, the municipality of our area again sold our land, the land that we have claimed back. They again sold that land without consultation. When we confront them, they promise to buy land for us, from the farmers. We are still waiting until then. I'm very happy with this bill. This bill is promising and we are happy that at least you came to us and you are listening to our plight. Thank you.
I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 One, or World War Two. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 I'm a man, I'm a man.
Itengo amalini milambo nezo ndaba. Eh, ibabshungu koyoba umdu abiyele, unomxaba oshule ngumlambo, nomxaba kamaspala. Kotu fumansebe iya tiaki ibiyela ibiyele na gula katalakwa amaspala. So lendo umlambo tateleku ye genku. Tina kebandu sungo sumashishi na basakasa. Basakasa ayu fumanseba si senze disdena eh si maina nezanti listengsela bandabuka ayu. Awana access genku gioka lezanti. Utusapakwe na lopakiyako, na lotrakiyako apo usika lezanti. Eh zeke umnikazu omxaba ati omxaba ngwake. Eh so genkumla benwake. Atakbo zuba we nungafilisha kancani kau nobon umdan genye atiniyako eh ngafmana ngapemishi inku. Sen sichoke zinagi eseskaulela nananazo ehso ikalelani nzi. Eh kunemi kukuku eveli velenje mislabenu baba bandababa tibene. Se kukona jimiku kueveli veli klenene yo akukozinlela. Nindoni uno bangela ge ile yokukunaba kwa lemishaba. So ndia bulela no banisile. Ta opiniandi ichoke nditi hopefully lelele depili. Iza ukuasabama ipasi swe abanbaga kuti no koba pume eh koboke ndia bulela.
I am Sengati Makotliso. I am a committee member eh from Sengu and also an emerging business person. Eh the land issue is a very sensitive issue to the disadvantaged people. It's a very, very sensitive issue. At times you'll find a person after having an RDP house, the person will sell that RDP house and you buy it for fifty thousand or sixty thousand rand only to demolish it to get the structure you you need. Because you have to buy that house in order to get access to land. So we really need land. The issue of land is very important to us. And furthermore, there are children here who are working as tour guides who want to take people to areas of interest like eh the caves where there are bushmen paintings. Because those caves are in the land of the farmers, farmers don't allow them access to get there. As a result, now they loo- they lose income because they don't have tourists to take to tho- those those areas. Furthermore, the farmers eh claim to own the rivers and mountains. Are pe- are people at times when they are found on the mountains, they get shot at and they are killed. They say they were mistaken, shot by mistake. And even those who are caught at the river fishing, the farmers will hit them and at times they even kill the people because they claim that the land or the river they are fishing from belongs to them. We don't know where, for how much they buy the river. And furthermore, there's also a piece of land that you'll find that this one belongs to the municipality and it ran up to the river. It stretches into up to the river. But the farmer who's having the funds to to fence the area or his piece of land will fence up to the area that belongs to the municipality to deny our people to have access to that piece of of land. And furthermore, we as the eh small business people, we also try to mine in sand to get eh some, to make some kind of income, to sell the sand and also build bricks. But we don't eh, we are denied access by the farmers to get the stock which is the sand that we need to sell. So that gives us a big challenge eh the sand is also a source of income to us. So those are the challenges that we are faced with in this area. And furthermore, we've noticed that the informal settlements are mushrooming in our areas because people need land. They don't have land. The only piece of land they have access to, they flock into that particular area. That's why we have this eh, we see the informal settlements are mushrooming. Thank you.
Eh ndia nbulisa. Ika madam de ngupesi ifane wutyonase. Mani ichoke wa se ukale no ba. Lomthetu sa ambisana nao. Si ngavuya indoba unga pas. Kotu ake manke ndibe kenlendo. Enye yenwa diska Solplagi. Kawa ye jonga. Okuba abantu abamnyama bapate kancani. Envenkoba omxaba utatiwe ngonaidin thetin. Ustalela ge femele eh yakichwa akumxaba wayo. Yakichelwa nga panle. Na lomfuyo yayo, na lompa yayo. Ven umdan umnink. Waswe leka lomdan apo be sentele ni bengi namxaba utatiwomxaba wabo. Asitike sibuisa is kiba. Kotu mani jonga apa le constitution eight chapter twenty-five. Depindezende jonge forty o chapter five o glebi. Ninga duxa tetuange compensation. Di nomfane kiso wa lo tja tja na lomama baswele kula umdanawabo umnink. Kanga ba le history iti wabanzi mano mngaba. Kwanyasile baba mngabe ngupsuku. Baye ongena kuele lomxaba wabo. Bo mbe ngupsuku baba mngabe. Watetis grace. Tisa mukuti andi bonike indo engati imbi kalomthetu esno ikalela. Khasa saba compensation abantu wa kutwa saka satekange compensation yonge le chapter five. Ibe melba aiko kwa yona. Bestin bama ke katiwsepa. Kakuwa without compensation kutetutwa. Zenipinde nina forty apa o chapter five ni tetenge compensation. Ye ye pile do nismiksa kuyo. Ndiabulela ngos.
I am Percy Jonase. I want to say I support this bill with the hope that the bill will be passed eh as soon as possible. Eh in one of the books of Solplagi, where he writes eh, he narrates a story about the treatment of black people after being affected or forcefully removed from their land in nineteen thirteen, he narrates a story of a family who had livestock which was forcefully removed from their property together with their livestock. And by then they had a child who was still a baby. And then in the, on the road after being removed forcefully from their piece of land, the child passed on on the road. They did not have a place to bury the child. As a result, they had to quietly go back to the piece of land that they know belonged to them by eh at night and bury the child quietly there at night in that piece of land. That just shows how sensitive the issue of land is to us. This story is very, is very touching eh to us. We are not saying we need to revenge, no. And again, when looking on the constitution chapter twenty-five and also look on eh on section five of this bill, I see there's something being said about compensation on this bill. What are you exactly telling us? But you tell about probation without compensation, but on that chapter, I mean eh section five, there's something mentioned about eh compensation that the whole page of chapter five is not supposed to be there. The eh, I'm very touched by the story of land eh and thinking of the family which was forcefully removed. Thank you.
Eh sibulela kakulu kuzozonge speaker zetu esesetile eh si zonike zelagun guku. Kui ngosiza kuti eh so siza uteta eh ninga xala pabalekazi eh it's five minutes for you. As as sognobas kobe o o za uteta stela ngene ah. Kukuzo tetu mchekazoiwan. Stala bo ngabaza uteta. Eh stala bo ngabaza uteta baxalepa. Masimeka ngungu ngukum makame eh mchekazoa bo ngabaza uteta. Okay. And then envenuka balekazi, we will then allow again eh the 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 general eh audience esnayo. But oka ngoku, we just want to give the chance to the traditional leadership. We will point hands again eh for those that want to speak eh. It's, can you please time? It's it's five minutes eh. Thank you.
Xalanga pambili. Mani kubulise. Kukonge tayashantitina nganenzibasai. Si albulale lthuba. Lo ba si zo mapasisi ngos. Eh ndingosu kuebintala mabandla. Di kuingila ya mabele elange ni traditional council. Ilapa panswa selundini. Di yavuya ga lfulmen lthuba lo kendi tetu. Si tetu ngalomxaba. Wase South Africa welizule tu. Eh si na yundesihalela ayoba lekazi. Na nekukulukwene ni kwenu leme tetu. Ninga zixingemfa ingosi eh special kulenditeta ngomxaba. No kixtui ikona eh ninsi es ngosini. Malu nga nomxaba. Kanga ba kwa leto chumenti ubabe si twnyelewo angoko. Iofika pa ismleni zetu snono balo. Aba aba pa ismleni zetu kesihlalujie. Ngoku isifige la ngalenza sanamxanchi. Ifigi sitima spendule. Asizo ngapendule ike obake yona ndo ibisoki si jaa leme koyo mchaba. Sikula apa nabantu esidoba zeteta ayu zi nenene nyanis. Nezinto ebese senzeeka. Eh kunzi imaa kukinda wesina nyatilio kuso. Ingonomen slendu wabilungu sanga kwa zufika. Utusuka uzolu si zema klie. Utwu ukomnyumxaba. Fune kuproduce it ibisutukumeza kakululotu. Ubasi jonge apa eh xalanga pambili. Eh si jongu twenty, nineteen, u u nineteen thirteen. Si zo jonga nineteen ninety-six eighty-three years. Eh nogo lomi nyaga mininska kulustuli. Singa teti bimala ba nogo. Kasi jonge ile kulo thirteen percent way to sa u fumanayo. Sikulela kuso sanga bandwa bamnyama. Eh ezinyangasibambe u eighty-seven percent. Ibe melba indowe kitala sa tetanga ayu le sa ikalaze. Kotu akesiya vuya ukulumente wetu ede wa bona kaluba uyashuku. Iasi jaa lebi leivelayo aska ikli bekoto. Zenisivumele indoba singenise kwa ikona izi ndo zetu. Gwengela zetu esau sikaulezisa. Nisnigeni timeframe ndoba si ziziisa. Goba si saza ihlalujia si jonge. Kweza ngela zetu snawa ma kote snawa. A jongu mte twasnitis. Sikua zukutumele izi ndo enga ba sanga shega la ngemfa. Efe melba na tisia zisa. Inyanisile yona i amendment de ma ibe ikona sia ifuna uchinjumxaba. Indele abatu peganga ayu abantu ba kuti kulo thirteen percent. Isa ambaga ngungu wa leoniwa kwefama abantu. Ez fama bamanepesniwa. Aisengo thirteen percent sia fuma. Goba omnyumxaba so fumanegile bandu na bamnyama pati. Lo programia ambaga ngungu efumanisa omxabe fami. Sonke skalanga lonto sia ikalela kintoba lonto ukulumente abe uyayipagamela ngenyaa. Disze kuindo ya bandwa ba esbankin. Uye ebankin wio bolegimali unesipke bosonke sen to okalelu yenza kuinda wokuyo. Eh indoka la ba ubusa ibuna onomxaba. Landless awana omxaba. Awana wenzikoletera labo legimali wenzelendo kalelu yenza. Kwa kulo thirteen percent umninku sikuwa awukua zukwenza. No kwezinto esinchaalo eh ngoba ku ya fumanisba. Omnyumtu enomxaba ufelebeke lomxaba wake uevaluetiwe wenzwa yonki. Indo asau kwa lomxaba. Anikwe kintoba imali kanga banganga nza lonto kalelu yenza. Ziti sadvantage ke zel talale tu labantu bamnyama ehso. Sia ikalela akokoletera lasna aywa koleteraltina. U uyange bankin utungenu kala uteta. Ubutonba ayi na lomnwe no bendenao eh ngukuto nganjelo umtupambo akutetana. Ubonba akote wabansai fuma naletu di ngwenelai. Eh tisa mukuti ge xalanga pambili. Si zingosi sivumeleni kuingela zetu. Sekuluslula kengoku sejenzo nage emails. Si zitumele si saza kesitale pansi jong siselebi. Siza utumele ngowengela zetu si icho apo nogo. Sikoka ikona kota we support i bili yona eh longi esateta ngamalu ngelo etu. Omxaba. Sia vuya kakuluke ite yazufika le miniya namxanchi. Mandenga libasisi. Mani tien ngos.
I'm Chief Kuvintala Mabandla. Eh thank you, Chairperson, for the sake of time. I'll say, I'll say all protocol observed. Eh we are happy that you do not leave us behind and I want to also emphasize that please don't leave us behind as a traditional leaders. Because we have a lot of history that we can contribute when you try to resolve the issue of land. I, we are staying here with our people. The people have spoken here already eh are telling the truth. Because we really have a challenge when it comes to land. The issue of land is very important to us. And furthermore, we received this bill a bit late. We did not have the opportunity to go through that in totality. Because we do have secretaries and legal advisors who could go through and interpret it to us. So we, with that in mind, I would appeal to you, Chairperson, please don't close the door for us. Give us the opportunity to make further submissions as eh our authorities. Please give us, because nowadays you also have access to emails. So if you can give us that opportunity as well to submit eh our our submissions, our further submissions after having perused their old document. And furthermore, it is painful that in the past we had to go in the, in around in our country having documents of identification. For instance, if you come from Zolo to Makli, you have to produce identification because Makli belongs to somebody else, Zolo belongs to you. So tho- those were the challenges that we faced with. So we are happy that this bill is going to level this eh the playing ground for us. And the issue of nineteen thirteen, if you can check of the, on our history, it has a very, very long time from nineteen thirteen up to now. And eh eh that whole period, the piece of land that we own as the people of the or what traditionally does is just thirteen percent that belongs to blacks and the eighty-seven percent belong to somebody else. Yes, we understand that the process has started the program of redistributing farmers to some members of our community. But that process is very, very slow. So we are happy that you have started this bill, you brought it to us. But please don't close us eh, give us opportunity to further make other eh other submissions. Thank you.
Xalanga pambili. Ngananditina nganenziba sa. Di ngu ngos tinizul ematolandi ile smele londe ile zai ba. Di ngu chief londe. Ematolandi ile smele londe. Si eh yes, sendi covered ngu kosu kuvinta. Kotu anza dijeho umnink. Gulangela snengaki. Gu- gulange ni forest. Glamxaba ngwetu as as benefit. Inkomo zetu jasiteli ba ngatolandi desifilo glamatla diapa elangi. Snetemba gelebi dasi sia vuya na ikona. Unai farmer esemka flez. Eku konabantu baswa kwezinye itolopi. Esbu nasibe kamla. I farm ba tinabantu balanda usingena azufame zukulanda. Kotu gelebi siya fuma na. Jasiwa si zawi tada si sibantu ni jengu askokelé abantu. Siwa febonba batini na ngayo. Sikokele kotu asaya lawo nga bandu stelnav espansikwa wabo. Sia bulela kakulunga lebi sa okesia ambenayo sosha la pansi. Kotu gabu abantu bakosleka ikona nabanga kosle kiosapune sibuisa de kun. Kotu kweza famzula baimka flez zukusa abetoki. Bakona bandwa banga ngoba balanda oyetu, abantu balanda oyetu. Yaksomatolandi le bayanngwena. Uba ba benefama jema sibuko imali sia funu kusboleke penkisika namxaba weneleyo. Sia funu kwezitiri pa ya snawa omxaba weneleye. Ntenasitete wumxaba wetu. Watata ukulumente wapindwa nikesela banya bantwa banyama. Bezinyindahu ayisapa glanda oyeta sumatolandi de ngos.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Chief Londele. The previous speaker has covered me. But the only issue that I want to raise relates to the land which is under lungi ni forest. That land is supposed to be benefiting our people. But it is used by people from outside. We do have livestock that is hidden in that forest. There are farmers that are coming from cities outside who are also benefiting from the land that we are supposed to utilize as the citizens of that area. We are not benefiting. I would like to say we support the provisions of the bill. Having supported the provisions of the bill, but also we will take the bill. We will take all the objects that are covered in the bill. We'll take them back to our people because we are leading, we are representing people. So please do allow us to collect the comments or the views from our people so that when we come back, we will be in a position to present what do the people say. There are areas like Ikioki, that area, there are farmers that are farming there who do not come from our own communities. So even if we go to the bank in order to make a loan, we are not approved because with there are limitations here and there. Please, the land that belonged to us was taken by our oh, by the government. But now when the land is brought back, it is brought back to other people, not to us who are the previous owners of the land. In any way, we support the bill. Thank you.
Ngungosuzu elotando mabandla. Eh pati washelo. Kui komiti mandinumbulise. Di kungbaba kui komiti me gumeleba ikone ngosekoyo. Kuba omxaba ne ngosi awukua zuzulula. Eh se kutetiwe zingosi. Namukwenzanjama zwembe zwembe. Eh sia usapota lomtrimbo omxaba. Kasage nyanis ngashua ngemfa. Sia ambe ni sonke kule mntrimbi. Eh kuinda uzi tuapa kui mishacha esnayo. Ungasika inkosi sibenga ati asifuni le ndokwaji development. Genyayi omxaba umnink. Kutwe ka ufika mchambi project in kuulu. Utiiza ucriba omxaba uewewe wemfuyo nama simi etu. Skandi sia vuya kengo ka kusiza lomtrimbo. Uya konba uza opendula leme buzo esnayo. Kuba ulanda oyetu yaselangi ni lendawo kutwa ise zabanetabee kutwa intabelanga dam. Iasi vuisa kengo kuba sisa wamba sinigwe zasitaba taba se fama. Di tijandis jongile ndipaykane sibomba ayayasi. Tia konba kuko omofiswa kwa bandu ke kusotwa ni ayayayi ngoku sipenduleki. Tisa mukuti kibantu anebekasi lomtrimbi. Si ya usapota kase ufikele esantlini esirait. Kuba sisi snabalana yuna longa. Eh kufa kwa bandu kanti baza wamba besensezabi achenda. Ube ona umbono omxle. Ona umbono omxle kase ufikeleleke ebandu ini enganga wabo. Abanga tikandi bansela abantu abenselisiko. Ndiabulela ngos.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Zelotando Mabandla. The, I am a traditional leader. I am a chief. I assume that among the members of the, of the panel, they are also traditional leaders that are in your midst. There is no way that you can divorce chiefs from the land because they are, they are rightful owners. We are supporting the bill. In supporting the bill, we are very happy, we'll be very happy if we can also be included in the process. We do have small parcels of land in our areas. But we are not utilizing it because it is very small. There are, there is a notion that traditional leaders or chiefs are against development. Maybe the reason is that we've got only small parcels of land while the projects that are supposed to be developed, they are huge. So those projects will at times occupy a lot of land. As a result, we won't have land that we can utilize as pastures or to cultivate. There is eh a notion that in Dabe Langa there is a dam that is about to be developed. We are happy because in the Langan area, that is going to benefit our people. There are big farmers that are coming from out, from eh outside. They are benefiting while our people are not benefiting, while we are the rightful owners of the land. We wish that this process can be given to right hands so that all the people who are supposed to benefit can benefit. A challenge that we sometimes face is that such processes are given to people who become selfish, who become eh, who only service their own needs without eh giving chances to other people. When I am in my area, when I look at the big farms there, eh I do have hope that one day I will also be given a vast land wherein I will be able to own it, wherein I'll be able to practice farming and also to cultivate for the benefit of my family. In short, I support the bill. Thank you.
Di khalale kuzozonge ispatama la zelibisu. Do ngu masentle sitloboko. Masentle sitloboko. Inkosi yase petania panskuwa Batloka Traditional Council. Masentle sitloboko. Masentle sitloboko. From Batloka Traditional Council. Di kokela isizwe sapaya epetania. Tinapa kuingela yase Batloka. Asunabo ubukosi besiku. Snobukosi bezizwe sikokele isizwe zetu paya. Sa shutelwa sa katele omxaba. Ukusugela pangon nineteen Ukusugela pangon nineteen thirteen. Akosasina, sa zange sibene tuba, lokula ulo njengubukosi. Siyayasapota ke ipile, nango na isayi ilwayo. Suzayi xlamachonwana, situmeleke nati, kwezo ndauza, mba batumele kuzu. Inza positu, siyatinga, kuba maslime, kwezo ndauza, satele kuzu. Namashelo, asana ona, sifunumtlaba apangaleleyo, engosi.
Greetings to the Chief Person and your delegation. My name is Masintle Setoboko. I am from Batloqua Traditional Leadership. Eh, what I would like to bring to the attention of the committee. We are leading a nation where I come from. But the problem that we are facing, we are not given that opportunity to exercise our authority. Our land was dispossessed since nineteen thirteen. We are not given an opportunity, we are not given the leadership role that we are supposed to play. We are happy that the bill is brought before us. We support the bill, we hope that our families will benefit, because we need the land so that we can have our pastures, where we can graze our livestock, where also we need land, wherein we also be having the chance of cultivating some crops. So, by bringing up the bill before us, we hope that a lot is going to improve our lives. And we will take the bill back to our community so that we can sit down and analyze it, then we will bring our submissions from our traditional leadership area. Thank you very much.
Siyabulela kakulu, abandwa anabe kasi. Eh, ngoba ni kaitrishe izimfo, nemibo no yenu kalepil. Eh, amakosa etu esiyambana u, ba unikaitrisela, indoye kuba nizakwenzanjani na. Kuba sesikritile kuiska ba sokupa lasifage izimfo. Koda bazan kaitrisela, eh, indoba nenzanjani na, ka nifuna kuba ilizulenu, liviwe. Eh, ngoku kaitrelayo in this bill. Eh, sizo kala ke ezinye izanla, eh, ezifunuku komenda. Imizu zumitatu genkuku, and this is the last round that we will be dealing with. Eh, un number one, we two, just next to the wall, there, petit pep. Eh, alande, eh, sisi, onende bonvu. Eh, si, si, un number one, nangia. Un number two, kusisi, onende bonvu. Sitalizanla, sitalizanla zipaka ame. Sitalizanla zipaka ame, ungazestule. Uh, un number three, nguwe, nguwe, un number three. Un number four, ngutata, unumazokre, number five, mvendwaaki. Eh, utatalo, ulala estule, un number six. Ntizauzakuni, woputi. Eh, ngu, kusisi, sili kribileke ilkala. Siza genkuku kwele kala. Eh, ngu, number seven, ewe, ewe, puti, elaline, number eight. Eh, number nine, paimva. Number ten. Number eleven. Kukubela ke, asizu pinde si, si kobeke ezinye izanla. Imi zuzu, mitatu kupela, eh, uzitraze ikamalako. Ukuba usuka mbutweni, usttraze lumbuto usuka kuo. Eh, ukuba usuka kuma farmer, eh, o business forum, o civic organization. Noguba uzizele, njengomtu mtlambi, ulala e farmer, oka ni oakulshwa e farmer. Nomtuz shalela nje elekshin. Siza kwamkele, tinawo, ngomtula pawa, amkeleki, mtlambu sugenkonzweni, uzor representing konzo, siza kwamkele naw. Lamtu upha egukubeleni, kukubela, asizu pinde skomba baani. So, sitalabantu ke banga, sugesztulele, nba ochoini line, kuba sithe, sitalizanla, zavela izanla. Three minutes only, siyakhlala sa panzi. Abandze sngakwasba khlala sa panzi, zinkosi. Tinabantu, singenkwa anabe kasi, sishlala panzi, inkosi.
Molweni bashalanga pambi. Molweni bashalanga pambi. Dingumiyeke, Zvicta Olefand. Tishala wa thirteen nineteen, apagle otloke, shina apetjoki. Sinefama yakwa Olefand, Epenrooi, apanga pezulu nganaku. Siyayi oona yeye etu, pati asikwazi fumana, yai farmer katato mkulu wetu, eytenhile, aywalifaa. Ifama yakwa Olefand yaitengiwe, ngutato mkulu, koto namtsanjaskwazi basanga ifumana. Umtlaba wetu kanyuwa inefem. Sina yasbanaya ifumenenjani, nomchulu mendeh, ukona kwa paga mtsa. Sikala genkwa, indoba na singe taga, lukwenzendokutisuzu fumana, itakilidhi yakwa Olefand, iziwa Olefand. Nabani na ono ngado, olapaguni, ukuyapezu. Sikala indoba na magavuyale kuti, asikala indoba na kukubeka ndoni, malunga nale farmer. Engosi.
I am Miekezi Olefand. I am coming from thirteen nineteen in Yogi. Eh, I am happy that the committee is here today. What I am bringing to the committee, I can say is a complaint. It relates to a farm which is situated at Benroin. The Olefand family is the rightful owner of the farm. It was bought by our great grandfather. But the farm and the government are the only individuals that are benefiting. The Olefand family is not benefiting at all. All that we are asking from the committee is for the committee to assist us, so that we can get a title deed for that farm, because that farm belongs to the Olefand family. We will be happy if we can get that assistance or that advice, so that the title deed can be given to us as a family, so that we can start benefiting from the activities of that farm. Because as of now, that farm is utilized by the farm and which doesn't benefit my family. Thank you very much.
Dingwenele lepil, kuba ibene mpumele, ngoba nati. Ukona ifama enxala etalwa, mnana, anxala peto, ropinxala ngapandze, eslali. Ikona ifama enkuleksetwa yakwanela, nikoto, ibinga sa onoanga bo bandubai, onoanga, abantu abamshlo. Siyayi ngwenele indoba, nyani, ifiga yenzekele, ndo, kukwazwa, kwa kiwe, kubekue ndau, nobazifem. Kwa kiwe, ne mall, kwa lap, abantu anabe twakwaz, ossebenza, sina abantuani. Abapa, sile, baso akoma college, akoma university, abana ndauza, ossebenza, bazilele. Baba ngape akoma kapa, akoma chauta, bafumani msebenzi. Siyayitela londo le, si tenga, kuba ngati ngani mpumele, engosi.
Greetings to the members of the committee. My name is Nobokolo Sundi, I am coming from the EFF, a political organization. We wish that the bill can be considered and be passed, we wish that it can succeed. There is a farmer that is closer to where I am staying. It used to belong to the Nelani family, but as of now, it is owned by a white family. If the bill can be passed or can succeed, we wish that land that can be brought to our people, must be brought to our people so that people can benefit. We need development in our land. We need to build malls so that our children can get employment opportunities from those eh, activities. Our children are coming from colleges, others are coming from universities, but they are unemployed. So, by bringing this bill, it brings hope that things will be better for our communities. I thank you very much.
Molweni olwi, ikamalam, dingthobe la Sean Makubela. Kui ndau yaselinyawe, ni kuaduan, panzukwengosi ubakolele, diabulela. Eh, diavuya ubako apa, lenda u namtsanj. Eh, indwen tingayo apa namtsanj, tinapakuaduan, panzukwengosi ubakolele. Sinama simi, akijelu akdala ulinyo. Lama simi akijelu akdala ulima, kutala silila ngao. Wakho i project ete ezowalima, ite, kubakanen, libre, kurafi ikamalayo. Kutala kesikala kumaspa la wetu apa eyuki. Indo apa emakliye, ndo bangaba, kutala la project, twa yakala ngo two thousand and seven. Koto kontrates Afika ebantu nezare, yasstreswa la two thousand and seven, kwa twa ekala ngo two oh nine. Siyakhaleluas, ba urafi yaslibazisa, because la masimi, abantu bakuti abamnyama, banemisteki ofuna umtlaba. Otu, baba beke iwo, kiko, nama ngewa, abantu bashake belamba, because food security ibaleki. Kuba nizobeke zindu, nipindi netukukulu mendeh niyalamba, aninaku, tya ezinhli. Londo nitatye i food security, nabeka kuyo izindu. Siyayitela urafi asipendula, ayakutlala ngati. Saske saya pawa maspa la, siyokala ngalondo, instead of basipendulu, ngomtua esofisin. Wasu afone la, ebantu abazi wat committee, elan tukeni, asini ke induetsho, ndoba ngaba, bo na bayawitrowa na. Ez, kuba abazu, wasu kubeka walime la masimi. Kuba indua zawenzeka, abantu bakfunu beke zindu pana mtsanj, koto abantu bayalamba. Siyayitela kulu mendeh, lukwana, nonika abantu ifama, bayobeke izindu, kuyalanjwa. Pana nitata, sitata ama simi, abantu nembe bewalima, because ngawe tusanga banda bamnyama, sitingumtlaba wetu. Izindu ngositu, zindu onitina, kuba pana oke apangela, oke alinyo. Siyayitela ndoba ngaba, wongu ngomtu one farmer apa, ifuya une lungelo, lokuitata, magaitati, aysebenzi ise, ngentela ereit. Siyayitela londo, abantu bayapangela, naati siyafuni, ndoba ngaba, urafi asospendula pakuaduan. Kuba siyasa, pana siyantanyu asenzwa, abantuani, siyafuna lantuka rafi asospendula. Kuba abantu abakoli safor three months, mvendwa kwa nyama la. Siyayitela, umeya wa lapemakliye aspendula, engosi.
My name is Chobani Makubela. I am coming from ward one, under Chief Batolele. There is, there are various land parcels that are not utilized in our area. We were promised that there was going to be a project that was going to be started around two thousand and seven, under Rafi. But later, it was changed in two thousand and nine. But that project is not yielding the results that we were promised to get. For example, there is a tendency where we as black people, we are given pieces of land that we are supposed to practice agriculture. But what we do, instead of producing from that land, we simply build the houses for us. And that is wrong, because we are supposed to promote food security in the area, in the land that were given by the government. We will be very happy if we can be given answers by Rafi, because that project has collapsed along the way. We were not given eh, satisfactory responses. Instead of being eh, given some attention, we were referred to various wide committees to come and address us. But even in that case, they are not giving satisfactory answers. What we are appealing, we are also asking the mayor of Yogi to please give us answers, so that we can get eh, eh, good response about what happened to the project that was promised to be started by Rafi. As of now, what I want to stress is that people, especially the black people, must stop taking land and build houses while the land is supposed to be utilized for food production. Thank you very much.
Bulise, mtsalanga pambi, lenava mngonkelyo, low tetayo, ngubota, class. Ilungu, kwa ANC kuatuu, timeklen ndau, nshengomtsadi. Tibulela lemini enkulu kangaaka, steta ngomtlaba klen ndau. Indwen konda, abantu betu nati, ngokbanzi, siyauti ngomtlaba. Asibona ndau yaseyuki. Eyuki ndau yeno umtlaba umtle, ngakumpi, embashini, impuyo kantoy. Sichikeleswe, ngamashati nama farmer. Abantu balapa inkoli soyabo, abantu abasuka es farmer. Batutuluake ngamashati, baba seslekshin. Bangabantu abana matakane, namatola nawabo. Lenda u wifulekileyo, nibona, kaslapapandze. Imbasla abantu balapelokshini, ilha balapakfuchane lokshin. Londo isenza genkuku, imbasla yetu, inga viko glomkanga twasufunayo. Isenza genkuku, londo sesitisi atengisa, imbasla yetu, singa itengi, singa lentela, sifunanga, ngoba, aykomkanga twi. Di tringbala lemini, ngolusu, ulusu, ndilulela kakulu, sbamba ngasozosbini, uba ela ngalte la Afika, nalapeyuki. Endi tringindokokwana, ubani nobani, okoyo, glentla kaneso, nongekoyo. Ufane, lbulusu, altateli ngalelo, ngoba ti, napeyuki, sipansukwendizelelo, umtlaba asanao. Ndesenge nawo ngomtlaba, itolopi, ngwinge, ilogisinkuli, khas kuti, innani, labantu balapetjuki, lipezulu, engosi, mtsalanga pambi.
My name is Bota Class. I am a member of the ANC from ward two. I am grateful for the opportunity that we are given. I am a resident of Yogi. I, as we are aware, the question of land is very important to our wider community. People need land for various activities. Yogi, for example, is an area that has got beautiful grazing land, wherein we can graze our livestock. Yogi has also vast area where there are plantations, there are forests, there are farms that are around our area. But our people are not benefiting.
I would like to remind the committee that our people were evicted, were evicted from the farms. As a result, they are occupying only very small parcels of land. They do not have enough land to graze their cattle. As a result, when we are practicing, we are trying to produce our livestock, the quality of livestock that we have, when we take it to the market, we are not benefiting. We are not getting the value that we are supposed because our livestock is not of good quality. What I would like to say is to say, I would like to thank you, the committee, for bringing to us this bill. And we hope that people will be given an opportunity to own land so that they can also practice all the activities like agriculture, like the grazing land. As you can see, our town Yogi is very small, but our townships or our villages, they occupy, they are occupying a vast area. That means this area has got more people, while the town where we are supposed to be economically involved is very small. So we hope that by bringing the bill, it will change the lives of our people. Thank you very much.
Projecti kuwa nang. Eza le mho yo na, neng ke salosa tijawa zahurin. Betania hau kochani kashigo, mugua kaa naha. Eh, projecti ania kuwa nanyi ko pani kadi pofo lo, ya hola giri kit, hau me di fuda. Usine di fuda ndenge, hunale bonte adeba, nipesale bangana ha, bama hua. Ale mung, ya hola ore nisha maplas, di kampo tega yangu hoteti, ma nibe tania. Betania ma ni, prasidanda baliu la ngozona, habaliu lehozona, baliu la blomfandene, basilewa tveka reni namu, nukidise mu. Juale lehulu halayo, ma nibe tania, di pofo lo di ngat. Hunayu ala hutbo twa diswa. Kila katswa mauba, le maube ngatete, eh, ngushwe tugele, shume, mashuma amararo ali goyana. Di pofo lo tena di klo swa, hunayu ala, hunayu ala, kore gbinan tueka saite, bima na wuru, ne, bito laupetela twa kavatu ba ni. Kalihulu la bo runa, nebale sewa ngotwi. Boti islo ngwe turohne ise, lensaite, lensaite buro agama, ru, runa rekan tuenau lensaite, di pofo lo ta buro runa di ashwa. Enana hara re di shuile, keshuwa lakun tue ma no bo handret, kive tere kala le hapre. Neng ke vatu ba izama, botli kaufela, tasan ne, slobo komu, numpanengu ala tueka shapa ngahulu, eh, jirehulu vatu ba es. Ya hola kibuaka projecti uti, utwa nang, utwa nanya izama, iko pansi nguzani sa boya, kore gitlerile ngwe. Ya boya, hau ka bo na hariswa, oka utwa oswa bizi, kubetsu hutkalele wé. Juale, bunetu bata ba kuwa laka haribuwa, jejea ta di kupo, sina egari kaba zonatani, tere tso twa ogoduku le, muso mu butu ozebe, musa fela. Ayukule bu wé, uchohaka.
Um, greetings to all. Uh, my name is Molatedi Molatedi, and I'm from Betania, under the leadership of Mayor Chief Sitoboko. I would like to say I'm very happy for the day. I didn't think we'd see this, the day, to talk about the problems that we're having at our area in Betania. Our animals there are many, there are more than thousand, more than a thousand. And the white people have taken all the land. We don't have land there, we are, we don't have a place to graze our animals under our organization that is called Utwanang. These white people don't even stay there, they stay in Bluefontaine, and then left people like me, who is a head boy for them. And there's no grazing land, and they have borders in those grazing lands, and the grazing lands are owned by them. There's one man that now lost more than thirty of his flock. And that was, um, that this is the time for us to, um, for us now, for, for the animal, for the female animals to prepare, to be prepared to, to mate. So the bulls own all this land, precisely the bulls. And when our animals die, by the time they want, they say they die, they die in hundreds of numbers. And I want to tell you, Utwanang is comprised of people of hustlers. We hustle under Mesproboko. And the only thing that we are here pleading to get is the grazing land. Because our animals are many, but we don't have a place to graze our animals. And we have sheep there, our sheep is mainly for mohay, for wool, wool or mohay. And I hope when we are here, it's a new day for us, it's a new dawn for us. We are getting our freedom today, we're going to start over, and everything is going to look bright for us from here onwards. Thank you so much.
Ma, bulise, ikamalam ngupetru kimmikabin, ndesuka eh Watu, ndililungu de ANC. Eh, uchulume nde ndamulela ngipile ateh wesana yapa kuti. Kwa tandi, tando utanini sa. Uchulume nde inga angakaulizi sa, ukipasi, ukipasi sa lipile, because ikonin nga ya peyuki. Si lili apeluxini, si tene ne, re abantu sasiku tue maplasin. N'wo omneyo abantu, baba shala ngapengangahu maplasin, ndigumdomche. Wa yesingaba fuin, namdi ngomonyo abafa fuin, abasa kasa. Kua figikampana pe ngupichu Bison, ngondu ba, yas chlugumeze. Ilendo nditi uchulume nde inga angakaulizi sa, upichu Bison, wa kupaba ndema plasin, wa planda ipain. Kwa tindo anzina yango, ufuile abi, likunzwaana, labantu abamshope, abao ona musa, abao omkulu. Ba fuile ngoku, ugozula tina, tina abantu baninz, bamnyama, siya sokol. Siya itayala guchulume nde, maka kaulizi se, ngale, ngalule solo tijalo kulepili. Uwenzela, at least, si fumanu umhlaba, asinanda, inkoma zituzi afap, zitshaisa zimoto, because si fagu abenda wene ngangin kampi anyi. Umhlaba omkulu oje bilaye waseyuki, o ona likunzwa nyana. Nabanda bassebenza yagulo pichu Bison, likunzwa nyana labantu. Ubenefita ipi likunzwa nyana, abantu baninz awalapeyuki, abasebenzi. Solo n'do le, ingeske uchulume nde angakaulizi sa, yonawa eyuki, ngulu inomhlaba oje bilaye, patiku benefita ipi likunzwa nyana, engos.
I am Patrick Mchabini from Watu, and I'm a member of the ANC. I want to thank the committee for the bill. We are pleading with the committee that the bill should be fast-tracked. Where we are staying, we are densely packed because we don't have enough land. And furthermore, some of us are emerging farmers, but we need land to do that. Yeah, there's a, this company called PG Bison, which is abusing, abusing and oppressing us. They forcefully remove our people from valuable pieces of land and give those pieces of land to white minorities, who are now becoming very powerful farmers. And yet our people are struggling, and even this area where we are staying, it's a very rich area, but it's very small for the community that lives in it. And furthermore, we also noticed that some people are posting that Bison is helping us, but it's a very small number that are benefiting from Bison. Most of us are being abused by Bison instead, as much as a small number is benefiting. So we are happy that you are here and you brought up this bill to us, but we are pleading with you, please, fast-track the bill. We hope this bill is going to bring a change for us.
Molweni, eh, ikamalam, tengu ngunkululeko, smanga, epakli east. Eh, tengu mama, eh, oli mikati, bota onthla abantu abaninz. Eh, engosiya, mti ngumama fuileyo, tinengomonti ne kusha, tinetipu. Eh, inkomo zamti, untisabantu ana, bases university, ndiatengisa, ndifundi ise, kaku tetwa ngomhlaba, yasi iba ngatik tetwa ngenyama, uzife uchala, ukondu kuti engosiya, ingaske n'to, ibe indesa uza ngoku ngoba. Ispace si nginforion, telenfuyo enayo, nespace ndima kuso itu niyamkotwa, ndiasapota, ndiatengisa, eh, asikoskulu. Ngoku, kaku tetwa ngomhlaba, ndiso sapota kakulu ba, ma isele n'to, inukele napesulu esin taben. Ukuse na atike sikamle, si fumanu farmer, sikua zukunaba, sikua zukulima, ngoku sisena mantla. Eh, si kume, abantu anabaya funda, engosiya, mtifundi, sina abantu anabam, abanye bayapangela, abanye bases university, ndi kalemfuyo, so, siya itayala, siya itayala kakulu, ma yeepakli, si fumanu farmer, asakitwe ni, koto siya itayala, siya ilangazelela kakulu, engos.
I'm Ngunkululeko Smanga from Barkley. I'm standing here as a woman who's practicing home gardening. My home garden is producing a lot because I, I sell from what I produce there, and I'm also having livestock like cattle, sheep, and even poultry farming. That's one of the things that I also practice. And I can manage to send my children to school and educate them and send them to university. And this area of Barkley is an area where there's not employment. Some of us, we live out of our own, so I'm a working woman. I'm very passionate of working, and my work particularly is in farming, different kind of farming, livestock, poultry farming, and even gardening. So we are pleading that you should please come to Barkley and assist us to get a piece of land so that we can expand what we are doing, so that we can also increase the kind of produce that we are feeding our families with. Thank you.
Molweni. Eh, ndimutamsanga, O James, mafapikini ni fani amlayo. Yes. Okoka la, ndifuna just before nditete, ndibulele, madu mkuwa alipili, uba ozo balapeyuki. N'do uko zwin, leo olule ikamalano welo. Tibulela kakululondele because, nishlabi ni kangeli because, lendawo yase yuki, inembali. Abantu baseyuki, etlachi, wases lalin, wases farmer, waseluxini. Eyo nando. Ibe ingenezaluku bo, ndetibene umhlaba. Pakuneselega, abantu abamshope, beses farmer banye, abantu, be kocho ngupsuku, be shala. Es xangi, ke ngando baba ingenandawo. Kwa felikwe abanye babu bama bezeluxini, bezeluxini be pati ali rojas. Ke ngai ingenezale, ekona kelo teshan. Dindi vapsungu, kaku nobako omdo otilipeili. Ati, unga mnyenayo, kodu ngumdo fana namgebala, o alapukule lapetjuki. Divapsungu because, noba lumi ingenezalaka ngayfumani. Ibe wesu kua kupichu Bison, because abantu baninchi, lendawo inga ngahu, indawo etatwe, kupichu Bison, kuba ibechala limiti. Abantu baninchi, pakua kutwa bazo buyeselu imbuye gezo, ngenda bebe shala kuzu. Ba kuchwa, ke ngaba banye banti bebe ngakundi, n'do uba kukoi imbuye gezo, ba tato ba kuchelo ngapandla. Ayenzeke, ala nuka kutwa bazo, niku imbuye gezo ngalo umhlaba. Isayi ngage, natswa nseti nde ifu, yale n'do ba namplangi nizo balapeyuki. Imishla bebe ninchi, apitati lo ngaba dabamshope, ifu nalapetulupi. Isayi esnichi, zitathwe, kabelu. Abantu ngoba sokola, population yalapeyuki ngapa kwenkondo. But abantu balapa basashala lan talo, yobukobo kaa. Titiyato kuti muna nde ipasi salepili, inga kuti, iveli pasi pegue pambile, ikua zabantu betu. Ba kamle because, abantu baninchi, baba yanga pandla, es lalini, kutwe lapeyuka, kukomi shaba, kukondoni, ma n'bu basen shalini, engos.
I am Tamsanga James, speaking in English. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing this public hearing here at Yogi. That was a very, very wise decision, because this area has got a history. People here in the area, whether they stay in townships or in farms or in villages, the only thing they know is farming. Be it agriculture, be it livestock, that's what they know. Many of our community members have been chased away from their areas by farmers, particularly white farmers. And they came to the location to find a place to, place to stay. Because of the previous government, they have to be allocated and pay rent what they used to call lodja. That's what they used to pay during those, those days because of the government of that day. And I feel very bad for people who are not supporting this bill, because the intention of the bill are very clear. Because it's going to change the lives of our people. And there's also the issue about this PG Bison. The PG Bison, his arrival in this area changed the lives of our people. It came to suppress and oppress our people, because our people, some of them were removed and promised to be paid compensation, but that compensation is still to come, even up to today, and others were not even promised that kind of compensation. The white farmers took over the piece of land that belonged to our people. That was a very valuable land that they used to, to have, that is our people. Our people in this area live like slaves, particularly this area of Nganahu, where PG Bison took over for forestry. It belonged to our people and it was very valuable, that it was the life of our people. So I'm pleading with you, please, let this piece, bill be passed without dragging the feet. Let it be passed and be fast-tracked so that it can change the lives of our people.
Uwenzanjalo, ndikalela komkulu, uyoma komu. Eh, ikama, ndingu akona tafini. Ndigu nobala, wabantu abacha, ku South African Youth Council, apa eelundi. Mandinga libazisi, mpekshinku bo, ndichungincho wewa. Man dinga libazisi, mpekeshinku bo ndichungincho wewa. Icho ukabi, ne elundini, gogoku ma kwayo, nobuni ntsibayo, komshaba ngubwengama farm. Ukuseke, ukwazi, ukupila. Ukuseke, ukwazi ukuhamba, fune kuseki sinogo kubana ngaba oyazi sondeza, kumi kumbekti beni no klima, ne mfujo. Singa abantu ba bacha ke, sia ivuma kwaye sinwa linto, kulumtini biwe land expropriation, se ipasi sale bili. Se ipasi sa ngeliti, ma kaka kwanasele koto o chapter five. Otetwa ngi compensation. Kaloko kumbu ulampekeshinku. Ukuse, ubenngundo shala kuleme, kushala kuyo uti komshaba. Ukwenzela ozo kwa zukuli sa, isipio sa, ukwazi ukuli sa, umnot. Ukwasinoknetisaana, na banyi abantu dalamatube misabins. Now, kasi tatake ngo chapter five. Asikwazi kuvumelananga. Ngoba, when the land was taken from our forefathers, there was never any negotiation, it was forcefully taken. Now, why must they be compensated? When we are dealing with the issue of expropriating land. Ilondo okesi sima sisinga abantu ba bacha sisiti, nige zanomshaba okokobe tu kuti, wisana mshaba, ubani kasba, engos.
I am Akona Tafeni, the Secretary to the South African Youth Council. Chairperson, allow me due to time constraint to say all protocol observed. This area of Jokabi and Elundini is surrounded by farmers, by farms. In order for one to be able to make a living, to go out of the area, to leave the area, that person needs to have knowledge of agriculture, need to be involved in agriculture or farming. And please, I wish that the committee should also note chapter five of this bill because it talks about compensation. And yet for us to make a living, we need land. But chapter five is talking about compensation and yet when the land was taken away from our forefathers, there was no compensation, there was no talks about compensation. Instead, the land was forcefully taken from our people. Why now should we promise compensation when it has to be returned to its rightful owners? So I'm pleading with you, let the land be given back. We at the South African Youth Council, we say let the land be given back to our people so that we can make a living. Thank you.
Pa wamela zaretu, wamela na sestevini. Okolmende okalanga ndio bana fifty percent si abantu abau lucha abatinga misabins. So kagoso zwa na lebili, tetu kutu ndole, izo basiso mololo salondo, yoba abantu ba bacha benga ofmano misabins. Njenkwa besenchi lo original kendi zalala is farmer, bati ndi komshala uba lapi lokshini. Es zalena nguame farmer, ngonaidinsevendi, kunyama farmer sashala kuyo ngapapa Nganahu. Onaidinsevendi, kupiga omlungu, sashala klo farmer, Iten, Afika Sabinsana Nati. Onaidin ninety-eight, Iten selo PG Bison. O PG Bison, nigenge, engos, nigenge je three days, wati unfuna uise, unfuna sipume. Sa puma keni ngome si foti, edisa shala kluksini, kunyekoko, shesa Afika Zafana Zongom. Bati ngogo sen dienda funda, ndabona ipogane, nde nampana, ndaya kwa PG Bison es ofisin. Kanifika ndakela omshela zocho ngene ne mshaba, kulapoke, ndafika ndasa mita illeta, ndikasutu, ndakela baskulile landawo, uba landawo, ba misabinsis, ba Iten, ba misabinsis, uba inda esen tabi. So wati manimnegi chansi weki, so mvendwe weki, gibanpalele illeta abati ndoba, abano kwa zuneke zalandawo, uba yinda waba Iten gaya. So nza muti, i reference letter as zikona isalomlungu, uba sashala pa from nineteen seventy, ozo cho ku nineteen ninety-eight, ne references wa kwa PG Bison. So ndia khalala, guba lo ndawo, gendive zapa ngapambile, engos.
Ika malangusebe kuti. Ika mulibet.
O, ika malam, n'ukulela Nikoliisa.
I am Ulela Nikoliisa. First of all, I want to thank our mayor Mamulens for arranging the committee to come to us today. When you listen to the radios, you'll hear where they talk about the youth that is unemployed and the job opportunities that are being created for the youth and so forth. I was born in farms, but I grew up in the township. In nineteen seventy, we had a farm that was ours and was bought by a white farmer and with our arrangement with that white farmer, we stayed in that farm. We occupied a certain part of the farm that is from nineteen seventy. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, that white farmer sold this farm to PG Bison and PG Bison wanted us to leave the farm as there and there immediately, together with our livestock. By then, we did not have nowhere to go, nowhere to keep our livestock. As a result, our livestock died along the way and then we came to stay in the township. And now that I'm a bit educated, I took opportunity to write to PG Bison and making a request that he release a certain portion of the land that he is not using. But instead, PG Bison said he is going to respond to me after a week. And then after a week, they responded by saying they are using that piece of land and on top of that, he bought that piece of land. So up until now, I still hold in possession of the reference letters, but there's nothing positive coming to our side. So we support the bill and we are happy about you coming to us for this bill.
Ukunigwa eltuba apa, uba, ni kwazi uteta, sikwazi uteta, sisonke. Okokala, ndikali ni buli singo ses kona apa, ubage ktetwa komshaba. Nkuseki lendu ubansigwen, engos. Ni buli se ndo ndo zetu, esuka, esule, parlamenti. Ubunabobongu abantu ba kona apa ngapagati, uwe. Ika malam, nd'ntabo makala. Makala. Umtimkulu isbon. Ni suga enaza. Ni melé apa i community, at the same time, ni suga kuingaza, Traditional Council epansigwa Chief Ndaba. Man, ndikali ngeliti ke, ukteta ogungena glomkolosi uo. Omshaba ekalegeni, ubunge nas boundaries. Foti, ubunge nas boundaries nje, ubansigwen, engos. Ubansigwen, engos nje ke, omshaba. Ubunge na yo, ndu kutwa i provinces. Okokala, ndinge kosi provinces apa. Wa colonizer komshaba. And u colonizer wa omshaba londo layo ilande lele, kundi eti. Abantu ma basuke, kunda waba gozo. Es tulopu, es gozo ke, apes nindes farm towns, oyu, komakliyo Elliot. Go onke, ukonyu kuyago alwalnot, nopekastwa. Zinda wo, ebe zishala abantu, abakokelezi, engos. Isizatu geso kubandi tetele ndo, siinye, ndu kubana, omshaba ubu petwezi, engos, uselulawweni, wengos. Foti ke, kunyekondo, ebe bebe iti inga, ekshali nguabo, apo befuile benemizi, kunda abantu kunyey mfujo yonge inti kono. But, ukusue nguabo, ubekonukusogol. Okubengno bangela ge, wendu kubana, bayo beka kunda waba bekuwa gozo. Be shiya yinda oza bo, infujo ya bo, ebe kwazi, ukula ngo shobulfanele gleyo kuyo. Dinga enega, foti ngeliti. Kukalongo nineteen thirteen apa doketwa lendo. Ndewa abantu ba evitwa nineteen thirteen. Before nineteen thirteen, there were people here and abo abantu ba bepanzigwen, engos. Ni kela ge, okokali, ndu kubana, kwa abantu abalapa ngapambile, la kui committee, lendu land expropriation. I checki iswe, ndo yee archives, ndo yuwa, and before kutatutu, bo yo yonge ndo, yu kubana, who were in those lands? So that mvendwe, gogo nguabiko mi vuka, gozo zonge ndu esenzegaye. I support your ndo yee land expropriation without compensation food, not with compensation because these people were not compensated, ukususwa kwa aboku ndawo, bebe shala gozo, bebe shala kuyo ndawo, bashala gozo. Up until today, some of them, they are still struggling and suffering. So ndia kela ge, ndu kubana, ndiakela ge, ndu kubana, yonge lendo, yazi we, uba, kunesizatu, sendu kubantu bati, we need land expropriation without compensation, engos.
I am Tabor Makala, timkulu from Azad Traditional Council under Chief Ndaba. I want to thank the committee and also want to greet the traditional leaders and our visitors. And the reason I start with the traditional leaders is because they are the owners of their land. At the beginning, we did not have boundaries, we did not have provinces until the colonizers took over. And then after the colonizers took over, people had to leave their land. People were removed and had nowhere to go with their livestock and some of them left their livestock behind. When we talk about land, we speak about nineteen thirteen and yet there were people who were here, even before nineteen thirteen were staying here. We need to check the archives and check who were the primary owners of their land. Our people used to stay in these areas with depending on their livestock and their farming. There's nothing that they needed more than those because they could make a living with their farming and their livestock until they were removed. But after they've been removed, they lost their land, they had no land to do farming, they had no livestock, then they started to struggle. So I don't understand the issue of compensation. So I support that the land should be expropriated without compensation because nobody was compensated when the land was taken from our people. Thank you.
Man, tadel tuba, ni kachele, basala ngapambile, abakoyo. Kodage ngogomte adwe fana, ndikala, kuingosu zomthonyama. Ni puma glanlu kangube nguka. Ni madi ba, utalbunga ke, elasekaya iba tenji. Ni shala apejoki, ndazo leno apejoki. Ke ngai esesizatu, ses kaza waga pambile. Disandile, abanba sejoki, izindebebe zeteta apa, inga gobi, olhlo npeglayo, u councila Pikenini, obe tetapa. Na lendo, ti kubao sugaba, unkosmakala. Niambone, jeme kaskazi, engos, ni vikubao tetapa. Banyansile abanebebe tetapa, ni wokavela wana tetanuku. Banyansile boonge abanebebe tetapa kakulu. Ingakubi geti nabando na balapijoki, sishukumezeke kakulu. Ukhlukumeza koku, ukhlukumezeke koku, gogokba, singa sakwazi, ukuyakuma tlaka, okoko betu. Ngoba balakuti lipasi shilka kokumbi. Lamato ta ebekaza apa, okoko betu, abazal betu bebe fuile. Asikwazi namshange, ukungena, kulumshaba. Kunjane, masita, itose ndoba, sia funa, singa abanba sejoki, sekese konde. O PG Bison, lo kanya kanya, ufumanenja lomshaba, ndikalela. Ibe si special, ini kwe, i special attention lomba lo. Na lando, doktango Robert Farrington, awaz kaloko indote ye, u owne ilizwe, elilonke. Ifarmasalapas, owna indote ye, Robert Farrington. Yenzeka njalondo le, sia khalala ge, oyazi londo le, singa abanba sejoki. Unyansile, unkosana ya kutu, tatu class madi ba kaibe city. Lamato ta sejoki, kwaya abanba sejoki, ba fuile kakulu. Kodwa, afuela elokshini. Ndo zetu ke, ziyachi wasipeli, leba asnamshaba. Lomshaba simi kuwa historically, komshaba wama bonomselo. Komshaba waba temu kuela kala, komshaba wama tolo kuela kala, komshaba wama pele kuela kala. Komshaba wama shube kuela kala. Lilonke ke, city, singa abantu balenda, omshaba ma buye le, abantu, ubani kasba. Ni nakepa parlamenti, ni tetu, go nineteen thirteen, omshaba benkumoza, unkosmakala. Sa utatwe ngo nineteen thirteen, omshaba wakalutatwe ngo sixteen fifty-two. Di kuma sisi ndoke, esifana, ba akumeti na ngolshop. Nani nisile, nispona selezondo. Andifunu kubeta ke, the ruling party, eh, ya pagamisa, ndoka nineteen thirteen. Ya ipinda lendawo, omshaba wautatwe ngo sixteen fifty-two, ebe samako utu unkosmakala. Sitika lomi shaba, ma pindelu, wundalash, ukfunu omshaba even before sixteen fifty-two. Lastly, uti omdo tetayo, kuba si tetayoga nde ne mshaba. Asunweta ndo, ndo yoba, si fumanele mshaba, ndesitala yo, ti tetu ge, ndinga tishal. Abantu ba betu, maba, aykeshwe. Ba aykashelu, ukulima omshaba. Ingolo icho ukab, aina Agricultural College apa. Ankalu i tetu londo re, ma linga yeno ma kupul. Ma kebe ko i colleges, i iskolo, kulinyo ekuso, engos. Ti tetu ge, ndituba lokubala, wandi bulele, on behalf of the Community of Yuki, Kanite Neza apa. Ibe fana, ki tetu ngu councila londo le, engos, mama, seni vee.
I am Talipunga Matiba ngubenguka, from Yuki. Greetings to the panel and also salute our traditional leaders. In fact, I was supposed to start with the traditional leaders. I like what was said by Councilor Pikenini and Chief Makala, that the speaker before me was a traditional leader, but he did not mention that. I like what they said, that our people used to live on, depend on their livestock and farming. And the people in this area have been abused and oppressed a lot. We can't even visit the gravesites of our forefathers and yet this land belongs to them. And we had livestock and we also had some plowing fields that we owned. That's where we made a living here. But because of the colonizers, we could not continue with that because our land was taken over from us. And then there's this issue about PG Bison. I wish that we should have a day to talk about the issue of PG Bison as to how did he get access to land. That should be an agenda for that day alone. And also this Robert Farrington. I don't understand why should one person be the owner of such a big piece of land where there used to be people who were staying there? Because this area where we are, we used to have Amamponto Misere in the particular area and Amapele in other areas and other areas belong to other clans. So those people are no longer in those areas, their land was taken over from them. So what Councilor Glass said, he was telling the truth by what he said. And I hear that we always talk about nineteen thirteen. But the issue of land, of the issue of being taken, removed from our land or the first land invaders in this country came in sixteen fifty-two. But I respect the government of the day for starting in nineteen thirteen. They have their reasons to start there. But I appeal to you, that we should go. But I appeal to you that we should go back to the roots and go back and start where this whole mess of us losing land started. And furthermore, I speak now as a teacher that our kids need to be skilled as to how to till the land. Because it will be futile if we just hand the land over to people who will not know what to do with the land. So they need to be teachers how to till the land and so forth. And we need to have agricultural colleges around here. I also grabbed this opportunity as I'm the last speaker because there's nobody will speak after me after now. I take the role which was to be played by the councillor by thanking you for coming to us. Thank you.
Si yabulela kakulu kui speaker zonge ebese tetile. Eh, si kolisen gokuna aknolechi ungusu makala ufike sesiztkazile ngosisi siyakachele asibuli samtane ngos. Si tkalukwenzi lizilombolelo kui ngosisi zakuti ezizitinileyo za za apa namplanje za expressa ifiusazu. Nje ngabantu abakoyo apa im sans Africa ngakumbi siswe esimnyama. Siyayazi imbaliyoku tatwa gomtlaba kuti. Siyayazi ndo yokuba ngosisi zetu za zisilwa infazwe zisama ukubambelela emshabinuazu. Imbaligeleyo engasose isuke kuti. Imbalie ndikalela nikona pezindle. Ni ngali balukwa ktraze labanduanabetu ukuse bangalaliki. Zonge ezizinvo ne zibegileyo kuti si za ukuzitabata. Si zitibanisene zinye izinvo esizi vileyo in other provinces. Ka sesitgbele ukuvizitela zonge provinces. Sizohlala si le committee and discuss all these views. Nje ngoba besen chilo klanikala yo ndo yokuba. Eh, sesa zifumana imbaliloano. Sapinda sanen kubo apo besimamele izinvo abandu besbeka ngoku kwaabo kundi esiti i oral submission. Si kumchigalo wesitatu ke ngoku lobasisa za ebantu ini siti zi public hearings. I provinces esandatule. Kasitgbe ba ape Eastern Cape siyake eh Western Cape sishieke le in Northern Cape na i free state esinge ka zukuyakozo gen nga ye covid ama nani enyu ke kakulu kwezandau. Kasesisgbe zonge ki province, we will discuss this as the committee. We noting all the issues that you are raising. The issue of chapter five of the bill that you are saying we must look at. The issue of section twelve subsection three, paragraph C that was raised here on the issue of the property. We are all noting that. We will discuss as the committee assisted by the legal services of the parliament and present, maybe in August or September, we will present the bill to the parliament with all the changes that you want us to effect. And it will be discussed by the parliament. And then it will be then that it will be passed. But we are all taking seriously all the views that you have raised in this meeting. Siabulela kwa kona kubanduanabekazi kulumtulonke obelusijoinile namplanje. Kui councillor zetu. Okay, kui ngosisi zetu eziko yo. Kui councillor zetu uzemibu toyo ngke ibi kona apa namplanje. Kume ya mkile eh besi kona na yango besi kala i meeting. Eh. Ukona ke i umtimbi welland claims ubuke wavela ke apa. Eh, le committee etuke awdilishane nalumtlimbi. Kodwa ikoni committee ekokele ngosisi umandla mandela etilishana eh no land reform. Siyazitata ke ezo sisa kuwe nje ngokba nisbeka apa. Ukwenzel ndo ba bazilandeleleke bonake. Eh, sinetem ndoba ama councillor kona ayaino utalendo ka P G Bison. Uba abandu zikonimpendulo abasfunayo eh ngalumtlimbi ka P G Bison. Siabulela kwa kona eh sinetem ndoba kani puma ni zoamba kakle ni fike ni pepile kundi au enesuka kuso. Eh, emabelin, emaxubin, iba tenjini eh kubachwa kwa. Siabulela kakulu, i meeting, si vale.